I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission for September 10th, 2020. Seth, roll call please.
Mr. Kartefilis.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wiley here.
Mr. Salapis.
Here.
Mr. Mills will not be in attendance, Mr. Magrino will not be in attendance, and Mrs. Corble will not be in attendance.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the August 13th, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any reports and correspondence?
None, none at this time.
Any site plans or subdivisions filed for review?
Just one, the Bayani consolidation plan on Hardwood Drive in Siena Woods. Just a house that owns the side lot next to him looking to do a consolidation plan, very straightforward.
Any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Seeing as there's no audience, I'm assuming there's no audience comments writing it's not on the agenda. And no old business will move to new business. 8A being the Planning Commission recommendation for Center Presbyterian Church subdivision and modification, Center Church Road.
So, this is a combined recommendation from Planning Commission to council for both a modification and a subdivision for the Center Presbyterian Church on Center Church Road. As you can see on the screen, they have a little bit of a unique situation. You can ignore this strange landlocked parcel in the middle, it really doesn't exist. I think it's just an error in our GIS system when the surveying work is done, they did not find that parcel. But, as they've shown on the subdivision plan, you know, this is the proposed configuration, but the current configuration is the church plus the two houses that are currently occupied, all existing on a single parcel. The church is now seeking to subdivide those parcels off and sell them independently of the church itself. Kind of similar to what we saw last month with the tomahawk plan of lots. Because Richards Drive is a private drive, you know, typically we would require a developer to pave the road to township specification, to create new lots on a private road, I mean, it's almost verbatim from what we saw last month. What's a little bit different about this one is we already have a number of existing homes that are accessing this private drive. They're not proposing any real new lots or new units. There's been no expressed concern about the current condition of Richards Drive. I believe they already have a shared maintenance on it. So, there's real no issue with continuing to have Richards Drive in its current configuration. So, that would be the modification portion, to not pave Richards Drive up to township specification with the creation of these two lots on it. The subdivision portion, similarly, just the creation of those two lots, carving off the church onto its own parcel. And then on the subdivision plan, they are showing that cemetery on its own parcel as well. But because they called the plan a consolidation plan, it's a little bit unclear if they intend to also consolidate the cemetery into the church. So, we've just made a condition on our staff report that if that is their intent, they really need to show that on the subdivision plan before we vote council. Staff is making the recommendation that the Center Presbyterian Church subdivision plan and modification be approved, subject to the five conditions listed in my September 3rd, 2020 staff report.
To be clear Seth, Richards Drive ends and does not connect with...
Correct.
Is that South Heidi Lane?
South Heidi Lane. You know, part of this plan is, if you look at the existing configuration of Richards Drive, it's a little bit difficult on here to see, but just to the left of what we have shown there in blue is the right-of-way for Richards Drive. You know, they're gonna be, I think they're proposing to widen that right-of-way slightly, so if we ever did want to try to facilitate a connection to South Heidi, it might be able to happen. The real struggle there is elevation change. Hi Rochelle, come on now. You know, it gets real steep there at the end of Richards Drive before you get to South Heidi. I think it's been looked at a number of times, I don't think it's ever really looked at in significant depth to see if it's truly, we're truly able to make it to that connection, but we at least have the right-of-way to facilitate that future connection where that happened.
So, with Richards Drive, I didn't quite catch it, is it a public road or?
It is private.
All private?
Yep.
You almost, if you don't know it's there, you can...
You don't know it's there.
You don't know it's there.
It just, it pretty much just looks like a driveway for the church or just the houses.
Right.
So, just one other thing, to be clear, none of this will be paved.
Correct.
Because the other thing, they did pay the...
Yeah, there's no like half and half or...
Yeah, okay.
But again, it's different because all existing units, all existing homes, it's no new...
Yeah, 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 that's right. The other ones have new stuff. So, the house is there now, is that's what's gonna be carved off?
Two separate houses.
Neither one of those is a manse, it's not part of the church?
Correct, they're gonna be selling both houses separately. I mean, both of these lots conform with all of our lot standards, lot width, lot size, all those different things.
So, is the church the landlord for both of these houses?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what the situation is right now, but I would assume so. Because it's on their property that they're acting as a landlord, I would just think that they're to the point where they wanna get that off their books and not be worried about maintenance or being a landlord for those houses.
Right.
Will there be a traffic impact fee for those?
There would not be, just because they're not creating any new buildable lots. Both of these lots already have a principal structure located on them, so they couldn't put a new, like a new house. If somehow they wanted to come back and say, "Well, we wanna create a third lot here that can be built on", then maybe we'd have to consider a traffic impact fee.
So, are they having a shared driveway for that?
They do have a shared driveway, and part of one of my conditions includes a new cross-access easement for Lot 3, because there's a portion, sorry, for Lot 2, across Lot 3, because a portion of the shared driveway crosses in front of that lot. So, in order to ensure access in perpetuity, we're gonna look for an access easement here so that it's never lost for this house back here that uses it for their needs of access.
What's the topography coming straight off that house to the road? They horizontally across?
It's not great.
Yeah, I'd say it looks pretty steep right now.
Yeah, there's definitely some challenges there. See there's, I mean, there's a pretty significant elevation change at the driveway and then... I think maybe the real problem, well, these houses up here, it might be a means of, you know, accessing to this direction, right? So, because Richards Drive effectively stops here, these are private driveways here, that's why it's a shared driveway here. If they were to come straight across, I don't think there's anything for them to do.
We're already...
Oh, I'm sorry, the hand doesn't work with the, there, I'll put the laser pointer up. You know, Richards Drive effectively stops here and it becomes more or less a private driveway here. So, if this house were to try to do a driveway straight across, they would have to do an improvement to give them something to actually connect into. So...
I mean, that shared driveway looks like it's like almost touching the corner of either building.
It's a little strange, I mean, these are older units. That's why we were gonna be pushing for that driveway access easement.
And it looks like there's a footpath from both...
Back to the church.
To the parking lot.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments?
I think it's fine as long as they have that shared access committed to run with the land.
I mean, part of it is, it's technically speaking, it's currently a non-conforming parcel of land with multiple principal structures located. So, part of this is somewhat resolving an existing non-conformity by at least establishing independent lots for these principal structures.
And again, what's the reason for the magenta color?
I just highlight, this was my doing, just to help us kind of differentiate each section of the subdivision plan.
Alright. Any more questions?
Nope.
Alright, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Center Presbyterian Church consolidation slash subdivision plan number one be approved in accordance to the staff's memo dated September 3rd, 2020.
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 8B, knowing from the Planning Commission recommendation for the proposed ordinance amendment, Section 440-601, commercial wireless communications facility.
So, jumping back to what we were kind of discussing before the meeting started. The FCC in 2018 put out a report order and declaratory ruling about removing barriers for broadband deployment throughout the country. In response to that, we hired a solicitor to help us out this year with crafting a wireless communications facility ordinance, which is effectively a repeal and replace of our existing ordinance that somewhat addresses these facilities, but not nearly to the degree that was being proposed. What this ordinance will be doing is establishing criteria for both tower-based and non-tower-based and small wireless communication facilities, both within public right-of-ways and without, not in public right-of-ways. Including, you know, location, screening materials, stealth technology, all these different criteria, trying to obtain a level of wireless communication facilities that doesn't inundate the township with bad aesthetics and those types of things, while also trying to keep us within the regulations established by the FCC where we're actually required to do certain things. As part of that, we're also establishing a wireless design manual that would provide more clear criteria for service level design for different types of facilities. You know, one thing that is important as part of this as well is amendments to the township's land use table. That would make, I think, three of the four types or two of the three types administrative approval in all districts versus large towers still being a special exception only in our industrial districts, which is what it currently is today, that is not proposed to change. And those are the significant towers that you see. What I'm referring to in the other types of towers are more or less canisters on existing locations or like new telephone pole-looking apparatuses with some equipment attached to them as well.
What, does this include or incorporate those new 5G, I guess I'd call them mini-towers?
Yes.
They're almost as big as like a telephone pole.
Correct, effectively, yes. So, what this ordinance says, and I'm just gonna have this sit up here for a while while we talk about it, because these are some examples of what we might see in the township under certain criteria. What we're basically saying in this ordinance is wherever possible, co-location is required. So, they have to prove to us within reason that there's no existing structure, facility nearby their proposed location that they can attach to without building a new structure in the public right-of-way or outside of the public right-of-way. So, that kind of covers the whole co-location argument, if there, you have to utilize it. If it's not possible to co-locate, there are certain criteria in the ordinance for these types of towers within public right-of-ways. They can only be so tall compared to the contextual height of other things. I think the current limit is 30 feet flat, but you know, if there's something else nearby that's a little bit shorter, you can only go, I think, 10% above. So, it's kind of a sliding scale on how tall these facilities can be. We also have language in there about if they do have to do a new large tower as a special exception in our industrial district, you have to screen it with landscaping and fencing, it can't just be fully exposed at the base. You have to try to implement stealth technology and, you know, colors within the facility for both small and large, to have it blend into the context as best as possible. So, what we're getting, we're trying to do is ensure that we allow for this distribution of facilities while also not being inundated with unsightly large towers of distracting, you know, just shiny metal towers everywhere or canisters on every single pole that can really be unsightly to the community.
Is it need-based?
That is something they also have to prove to us as part of the application. Even through the administrative process, they have to demonstrate a gap that they're proposing to fill. So, they can't just come to us and say, "Well, there's one there already, we just wanna put another one up just to boost what we..." There has to be a proven gap in service coverage to necessitate an additional canister and or pole. I think one thing I failed to mention, in addition to co-location, any of our districts, and I say districts, I don't mean zoning districts, I just mean kind of general service area for utilities, where utilities are required to be underground, these are also required to be underground. So, you can't put up a new structure in an area where there's underground utilities. So, you know, power can't come in and put up a power pole, because the power pole has to be underground. So, they, it's not, we're not excluding them to say they are the only ones that have to be underground. Everybody has to be underground in this case. So, we have to try to craft our ordinance in a way that we want to have the community represented, but we also have to allow for a fair distribution of this technology comparative to similar utilities, power, gas, electric, those types of things.
Seth, I was just gonna say, so a wireless booth can be underground?
Well, they have to, I think they have to utilize underground technology, maybe in coordination with co-location, adjacent structure. Effectively, if there's underground utilities, you're not immediately able to just erect a brand-new pole because everybody else is also required to be underground. That, I know it's a little strange, and I'm still trying to wrap my mind around what that means cohesively for the township, but that is something that the FCC does allow, is that type of regulation when there's underground utilities required.
Are there existing structures in the township that will become non-conforming utilizing this type of tech? Like, for this technology, when we pass this, once this is passed? And my follow-up question would also be, has the township been approached by any providers seeking to install?
We have done permits for them here in the last two years, multiple of them, but they've typically been additions to existing towers or poles. So, you know, we need to put a new canister up, we wanna replace the canister, that type of thing. I think we've done maybe one or two new poles. I don't know for certain right now if those would comply to this ordinance. I would think that they would, only because they looked very similar to a power pole, which is what this is intended to do. If we do have non-conforming existing wireless communication facilities, common sense would lead you to believe that if, you know, they needed to repair that to a certain degree, they would have to be compliant with the ordinance.
How prolific is this? Is it the idea that these are needed everywhere, is it more just updating and would that allow them to update the technology?
I think, we hear this a lot from people in Peters, that there are a multitude of dead zones, and it seems to be getting worse, and I think part of that is a bandwidth problem. You know, when you have gaps in coverage and then you add more people to that existing coverage, it's just gonna get worse. So, I think, anecdotally, I believe there is a need for these, and the hope is that this ordinance allows for us to have them look the way we want them to look while also servicing that identifying need.
My understanding is that 5G is that it's supposed to roll out over the next five to 10 years and replace the existing infrastructure, which I think, Seth, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are supposed to take into account, basically, being able to install smaller facilities much more frequently to accommodate 5G technology.
What I think the overarching problem's gonna be with 5G, while they are smaller canisters, they have a limited service range, and I don't believe they penetrate quite as well as 4G. So, yes, it'll be nice...
Quantity's an issue, right?
Right, so it's gonna be a quantity, a capacity problem, that they'll just have to replace existing while filling in the gaps with new. And again, the hope is that they would be able to do that with this ordinance without any real issues.
Is there any kind of density limitation where at some point, so that the... So, the determination isn't that, well, we can put these up everywhere and it's cheaper for us to put 100 of the crapier, I just used crap in that word, but, and you know, together, because that's a lot cheaper for us versus trying to put something a little more, I guess, high-quality or substantial, but only needing one every, I don't know, half-mile, a mile or whatever.
That is a good question. Part of the application for each one of these does require them to provide that type of analysis. I don't know if it specifically says quantity versus quality, but I think if somebody came to us with 20 of them in a very relative vicinity of them, we would raise some flags at that.
Yeah.
A serious question, why do you need 20 of them, it doesn't really make any sense.
Right, 'cause I agree, we have a lot of gaps in coverage throughout the township. But what, I guess what I, my only concern with this would be that, I guess in an existing area, if you can stick one on an existing structure, it's not that big a deal. But I would think that their continuous goal has got to be to burn down cost, and just like a lot of other things where if they can replace something every year for a buck versus, and put 100 of them up versus put up two that cost $2,000, even if in the last five years, that's what they're gonna wanna do. From a business perspective, I get it, but from our perspective of them saying like, "Well, don't you want the coverage?" And so, we need to put up, it's the new ones that concern me a little bit, not so much using the existing structure. So, I guess I would just want to know that we have a procedure in place to say, you know, this is on you guys.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna have that procedure in place, and any of those new structures are gonna have to hopefully be the last option in any of these cases. One graphic that I saw while I was trying to find some of these images of these proposed facilities, did a comparative between like a light post with a canister on it versus a large tower. And the light post with the canister was anywhere from 150 feet to one and a half miles worth of distribution. I'm sure a lot of that has to do with topography and surrounding structures. The larger towers had a distribution area to 20 miles. So, kind of back to your point, if you put a lot of the smaller ones in, maybe that 150 feet is the cheaper version.
I still don't know.
Right, right, so, it's kind of a, it's an interesting situation for us, 'cause you know, we haven't had a lot of them here recently, and we're hoping to kind of get out front with this ordinance and we'll see where it takes us.
'Cause I would think it would be the most, the biggest issue would be in a lot of the newer neighborhoods where everything is underground, and so then there aren't gonna be any, there's gonna be a glut of existing structures amongst, we're talking about people's houses to stick them on.
Right.
And again, maybe that down the road is not a big deal either, it's smaller than a satellite dish, but I just don't know.
I could very well see people being interested in lease agreements for a small little canister on the side of that. That's certainly not out of the realm of possibilities.
Especially if you're saying the coverage of the 5G isn't as big. So, one of those tall towers might be useless, and then there's getting access to it and the safety hazards.
Right.
For maintenance or something, something goes haywire, getting a special approved area to drive it.
I mean, the issue is the technology, if it's developed and the technology is just changing so quickly, they're out of date within, you know, by the time...
Yeah, and I actually, to piggyback off Rochelle's comment, I have a question Seth, like, you know, you said that they had, as part of the administrative approval, they provide an analysis of that. And it occurred to me that this technology is evolving so fast, like, should the township consider some sort of independent review of that? Like, if you asked me, I mean, if you asked me to review, you know, something that's completely outside of my, you know...
Realm of expertise.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, you could put down a, you know, an organic chemistry thing in front of me and I would have no, it would look like, you know, a completely different language.
Or an analysis of a 5G network.
Right, right, yeah, and so, I would just think we may wanna consider that in the future, you know, and not just relying on the analysis of, 'cause if I'm doing the analysis, but I'm also trying to install these facilities, it's somewhat of a conflict of interest or, you know...
That's a valuable point. I think, if we had an opportunity for us, you know, if we start requiring all these materials as part of an application, I think we'll quickly come to an understanding whether or not we can even handle what we're given, if we can even truly give it an honest analysis. One thing that's in here that comes from the SEC that contradicts what I initially thought, the SEC gave us clear guidelines in terms of a response time, and it's significantly longer than what the MPC gives us for standard permits. But the SEC regulations supersede that of the MPC. So, this ordinance gives us a pretty good chunk of time to look at and review any type of these applications. So, hopefully that would give us an opportunity to say, we might need to get some further input on this.
Because if I'm Verizon or Sprint, I'm gonna make it sound really good.
Really technical, right.
When I come in here and say, "You know what, we need to install, you know, 2,000", like Rochelle said, "2,000 of these throughout your township, and here's why", it's gonna sound very well thought out, but I just think we need to think about that going forward.
Yeah, I mean, so like a tower-based wireless communication facility, which is a special exception only in industrial districts, we have an approval window of 150 days, which is much more significant than any other type of application we currently have. And I believe the other ones are like 30 and 90 days for a new tower versus a co-location. So, again, it gives us a good chance to...
Is it up to the provider to seek out the locations? Like, they have like a team that says, "We think we need some of this area", and they go out and do the scouting, come to you and say, "We've found location A, B, and C", and then you guys go and look at location A, B, and C and say, "Yay, no", or ask questions? Or do they say, "Hey, we need them in this area and it's up to us to figure out where..."
No, it's gonna be up to them to come to us with pinpoint locations. I just, I mean, we certainly don't have the desire nor capacity to be like doing their work for them. And again, part of their application has to be approved that there's no existing structure nearby that they can't reasonably attach to. And I think this even speaks to monetary compensation. So, they have to try to provide a fair value to attach to someone's nearby structure. So, they have to provide us images and documents that says, "Well, we couldn't go here, we couldn't go here, we couldn't go here", and we can always feel verified that.
And that would be businesses and it could potentially be homes?
Right, it could potentially, I mean, it's pretty much any accessory or principal structure could theoretically have one of these attached to it.
Okay.
Church steeples or common ones. I mean, obviously, they wanna be higher up in the air to avoid any type of interference. So, they have options.
What about maintenance of that kind of stuff, is that part of this?
Yes, yes, they have to keep them to a nice working order, a nice working appearance. It says in here that they have to be installed to a high quality, so they can't be like leaning over, falling off, that type of stuff, I mean, it has to look nice and solid and stay that way.
Have you reached out or collaborated with any of our neighboring communities?
Part of it.
To see what their ordinances are? 'Cause obviously, there's people in our township that live close to the border that are probably serviced by a tower that's in another community.
I think realistically, so this ordinance, a lot of it does just come straight from the FCC and is required by the FCC. So, I would venture to say that most of these municipalities are doing a very similar thing. I think what you might see, the slight variations come into play are different screening material, design criteria, those types of things. I mean, again, when I was researching pictures for this, I saw images of like towers in San Diego that were very decorative, they had like, you know, metal birds at the top to really give it a totally different look.
I know in Florida, they, a lot of them look like Christmas trees.
Yeah, I think some communities do some pretty serious stuff like that. We didn't really wanna take that tack, we tried to give, kind of finding that fair balance between what the FCC requires us to view versus what we think is a reasonable accommodation for stealth technology and Heidi and that type of thing.
Have you heard of any issues with this with other townships who have already started this?
I have not, no. I would think that if, as long as people are pretty much sticking to the FCC criteria, I don't think these companies are really gonna have much to fight against.
I just think we, we're gonna have to revise these, I'm sure, because these things, you know...
The technology's always changing.
It's being, I don't think there's a lot of installation right now going on, so I'm sure, you know, the issues will come up, as long as, you know, we can come in and not come back and...
Yeah, that's the beauty of ordinances, they can always be amended, we can always take a second look at things, revise as needed. But we do think this is a pretty honest first take at it.
I'm looking at the maintenance piece, and it's pretty simple, but the one thing I don't see there is...
What page you're on Ted?
11.
Okay, alright, let's break you.
It's, but the thing that I don't see in there is about access to that, you know...
Well, that is for tower-based wireless communication facilities, which are only allowed on standalone properties as special exceptions.
Okay.
Let's see if, let me try to get further, deeper into ordinance.
20 does maintenance.
What, you said 20?
20.
I'm trying to see if we have a separate section in here that goes talk about access, because that is important, I think.
And then Seth, while I'm looking for that, I'm wondering, is there something, is there, are there indemnification? Okay, sorry, I did not get the...
You know, Ted, I'm not seeing anything about that. So I will make a note of that and I, we'll take a deeper look at this and if there's something missing, we might have to take a second look at that.
Yeah, my concern there is maintenance and access.
I, I certainly agree with you. I think we should have something in here that requires them to obtain an access agreement or something if they're installing this on private property outside of a public right of way.
And so then I am, I'm just looking at page 25 under indemnification. And I do see that it requires indemnification, I'm just reading a quick list, I miss and I apologize. Indemnification toward the township. But I guess I'm wondering.
About private property?
What about the residents or private, you know, companies or whoever it is that they, that they're putting these on? If there's some sort of damage or, I don't know, I don't know what could happen. But we, but we have indemnification clauses here for the, well, township, but I don't know that I see.
I mean, tell me if I'm interpreting this incorrectly. So it talks here, 25, section 8.1. Each person that operates wireless facility is required to purchase and maintain a general liability insurance and property damage insurance as specified.
Yeah, so that's their insurance provision, but it's.
Right, oh, the indemnification, okay.
I'm looking at the indemnification.
Let me ask this, while we're talking about indemnification, is, Seth, do you know if industry standard is for, outside of the township, I'm talking about like private property, is that industry standard when installing this type of property? Or going to be signing a lease agreement with the private property owner? Because the indemnification for, that Rochelle's looking for might be
Part of that.
Contained in a private, in a private lease agreement.
You know, then that would need to be part of this ordinance as well.
Yeah, right.
Then it would be, and a lease agreement has to be entered into, that this provides for indemnification.
The indemnification of the property owner.
I would think it should be defense indemnification so that just, you know, they're there, they're working, somebody's at their house, somebody trips and falls, somebody gets hurt or whatever.
The proprietor is not responsible.
Then there's, then they don't have any responsibility for it.
Well, that was the other reason that I was thinking about access too, is if they kind of get there and there's something, that homeowner is, that's part of the lease agreement too, that they would have to maintain some sort of access or an easement or something for that.
I'm looking for the section in here that talks about proving that they have to go, that they can't look, that they can't co-locate, which might talk about items required there within. Oh, there's an, at page 15, Ted. Item 29, access road, that's for tower-based.
Okay.
Maybe we'll find something similar for. Probably not, because.
Well, no, not for a non-tower.
Right, right. I'm thinking we might not, only because it's a little bit different.
The, the thing that I'm looking at now though is in the very back on 28, where I thought that it said in the summary that this was still going to be in industrial locations and I see all kinds of As under the, so on all of them, on all the different things.
This is kind of the, the general difference between, so it's four types. The small wireless communication facility co-located, which is like a canister on an existing utility pole, that's an administrative approval, which is similar to what you see on the screen there. A new wireless support structure with a small wireless communication facility would probably be like that image on the left, the taller one. That's basically a new pole. Again, administrative approval with all that criteria. The tower-based wireless communication facility, which is a large tower with large antenna, just is only permitted as special exception in industrial district. A non-tower-based wireless communication facility is an antenna, not a canister. It's back to administrative with certain criteria there with it. So really the only one, again, is those new large towers. That's, that's the key difference between the four.
So is the, is the administrative approval the most restrictive or which way does that?
The most restrictive is definitely going to be a special exception.
Special exception.
Because that is an application to the zoning hearing board and to council.
So I mean, I just reviewed this again and while obviously I think, I think they would argue that, hey, that's a, that would be a private lease between them and the, whether it's the resident or whether it's the owner of the property. I'm uncomfortable with leaving that completely open without any regulation.
I think I agree with you on that.
Because then you have a business or whatever that gets handed some money and they get, I mean, and if it's only written on their side, it's really going to be a one-sided document and then, because number one, I don't think it's fair to that business or homeowner. Number two, they're going to be coming back to the township for, for relief. I think that there needs to be something in here that designates that, that there has to be a lease to the extent of the putting this up for and on any private property and that the lease has to contain at least certain provisions in it. Or at least it should be discussed. I mean, I can't come up with every provision right now.
Right.
But I'm not saying that we have to dictate what the fair value is going to be. That, that's, that's, not necessarily any of my business. But I think that the leases do have to have something about protecting certain privacy rights, protecting entry rights, protecting notice rights and defense and indemnity in the event that something would go wrong.
So let's, let's just say if a lease agreement is entered, so I mean, I guess theoretically some of these could be installed without lease agreements. I don't see that being all that likely, but I, I guess I'm a little bit hesitant to say that every single one of these requires a lease agreement.
I think there's going to be some sort of agreement if you're going to stick something up on somebody's.
If we're going to come to the township, we're going to require a lease agreement. If we're going to come to my house.
Yeah, or, I mean, or just authorization from the property owner. I mean, we're not, we can't necessarily require that there be compensation between the two parties.
Could we say a written agreement or a written?
Yeah.
I would think authorization, we could just say we have proof that the property owner said okay.
It could be a lease agreement or.
But it could be a piece of paper that's, between the two parties. It doesn't have to be a, a lease agreement.
Can it be something that's filed with the township?
Yeah, that would, that would live with the application and the permit. Okay, so let's think.
So Seth, should we, should we table this and let you add that or should we try it?
Well, there's a public hearing for it on the 14th.
Okay.
Which is, which is.
Monday.
Monday night. We can include it as part of a recommendation.
Okay.
And then after the public hearing, it'll have, give us time to revise before it's.
So this will come back, will this come back here?
This will not come back to you.
But it will come back to.
It will go to council, yes.
I think as long as we put in there that this is a concern and something that, whether it's authorization, because just sitting here today, I, I don't know that I can really think through the whole process of whether I personally am okay with just a piece of paper that says, yeah, they took, they told me they were going to stick it here and I said, okay, versus providing some sort of protections or whether we should leave that as completely private decision between two entities or two, because I, I see both sides of that. And I don't know that I'm, I know enough right now to make a decision.
So that would be for all of, that would be for everything that basically requires administrative approval. That's not really ever going to come into play for the large towers.
Right, right.
I think there's value in knowing where all of these are too. If there's going to be thousands of them in the township over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, by having some sort of written agreement of record with the township, like.
Yeah.
Well, you know where they are though, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we can track. We have all of our permits in a system. We can tell what types of permits are.
Instead of you have your own big map, you might end up with dots all over the place. You're going to know where they are. But just a matter of, if it, if, it's really just, it falls under the, if something goes wrong.
Rochelle, you kind of enumerated a couple of different things that you would look to see within the agreement for the property owner lease agreement. You were talking about entrance and.
Okay, I don't, I don't know what all these things can do, but more like a privacy. I don't know if they can, you know, what they do. So privacy.
I think access is definitely one thing.
Access, notice.
They'll say notice, that's what I was getting ready to say was notice the entrance.
Notice of entry.
Yeah. 24-hour notice or something to that effect.
You say privacy.
I just mean privacy in the sense like, I don't know if these things can, again, I don't want to be like a conspiracy or anything, but I don't know whether they, would they end up being able to record something, would they do so and have cameras on them? I just have no idea because I don't understand it.
Right, 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 right.
So I just mean just, privacy considerations is all I would need right now to know that something's going to be discussed. And then for me, indemnification is a big deal because you can't, you can't put this on everybody's homeowners that is their homeowner's policies, the only thing that's protecting them.
Well, looking at the insurance thing, that the, in the lease, in a part of the indemnification, they should at least provide that the homeowner or property owner is an additional insured on the, on the general liability of the, of the tower owner or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, indemnification gives you much greater protections than additional insured status.
Just basically says they're.
And a lot of times insurance companies might not provide that. But you're way better off if you have indemnification rights versus just being additional insured.
The electrical towers that these devices are affixed to at the top, they're on a right-of-way. They're not on someone's private property.
No, they could be.
These, so.
Attached to existing buildings.
Yeah, these, you know, these small cell canisters or even some of the larger antenna could be located outside of a public right-of-way.
Like a telephone pole, I assume the utility, like.
But when you, when you start thinking about co-location, and you know, they talk about like church steeples and stuff and you're, I mean, you're, you're obviously outside of a right-of-way at that point.
And I think those are good because I think if you could, I mean, I think the technology awards that those are good places to put them on. I just think we need to make sure that.
Like Conrad, think about the, the rivers being built here. I'm sure they would be okay with putting some of these canisters on the corners of their property.
The new high school, it's probably at one of the highest points in Peterstown Township.
Right.
That would make sense to put a tower up there.
It certainly makes sense, right.
And there's already electrical towers.
Very well may, we may end up with a lot of these outside of the public right-of-way and all private property.
Well, I know Rolling Hills Country Club was approached to put a cell tower on top of one of the electrical towers. And I don't think they ever went through with it, but the high school could be.
Oh, yeah.
It would make sense to do so, yeah, perfect sense.
I think you get the, you know, those large roof structures that everybody's really looking at all and often.
Oh, and they probably need cell service.
And they're going to, they'll be technology dense. It'll be, it'll be technology dense there.
You know, this isn't just common cell service, it's emergency services.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Those important things that, especially around the school, it's vital.
Yeah, I don't think it's about putting up roadblocks, it's just putting protections.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I think these utility companies are doing so well that this is just a non-issue.
Based on Aaron's comment, is, I mean, we're not going to resolve and reword your draft tonight. So you have a public hearing.
Yes.
On Monday. So with the feedback you've heard tonight, in addition to what you're going to hear Monday, that will be enough to formulate.
To make, we'll, we'll, if we need to include this as a revision, which I think logically we will, we'll draft that in. And I can share that with you before we go back to council. So there's, tonight, there's the public hearing and then it's back to council one more time for adoption. That'll give us time after the public hearing to work on this. And I think the, the goal is to have this adopted by the end of the month. Because we'll have two weeks after the public hearing, the next council meeting is, what, maybe the 28th with an adoption there, so.
I mean, the easiest way or the quickest way efficiently to look at that, that issue is if you do have, you know, people in the other townships that you talked to, you know, find out what they've done.
Right.
I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, but I think this issue would have come up before and there might be a way simpler response. So I, I could be missing something, so I.
I think, I think what we're, what we're probably doing is reaching out to the solicitor to help us draft this because he'll know
Okay.
if anybody has done that. I, I am a little bit surprised that it's not in there.
All right.
So are you?
I think we're going to recommend, I think we're talking about recommending Conrad approval, given subject to. With the, with the revisions that we've discussed here tonight, right?
All right, yeah, I think that's, that's reasonable.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend that the zoning ordinance amendment 440601, commercial wireless, commercial wireless communication facilities be amended from, in, in accordance with the comments that made this evening and also pending any further from the public hearing last September 14.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any approve? Moving on to the planning portion of the meeting, any miscellaneous issues?
None, I just, I, I was at a conference call with Pindot and a number of other staff members where a council member was, a bunch of people from the community, kind of key stakeholders about the Valleybrook B-bout intersection and a proposed roundabout there. So they've done another preliminary design. I believe the rate date for the project is 2023. They actually, it might be 2022 with construction, 2023, I believe that's what it is. So it looks like that project's on the tip, it's moving forward. The preliminary design looked pretty good to me. They take into consideration the existing park or trailhead parking lot there and reconfiguring that just slightly, but I really had no issue with that. I think it's a pretty solid preliminary.
I saw the stakes, there you got stakes in the ground over there, was that part of the?
Probably.
Yeah. What's next on the list Seth, after that intersection? Do you know?
What's next after that?
At least right now, at least right now.
But they're moving. If I take a guess, East McMurray Thompsonville B-bout.
Yeah, okay.
We're pushing for Venetia B-bout, that's, that's a big project.
Okay, stop, this is my area. I live right between Venetia B-bout and Valleybrook B-bout.
I'm sorry Rochelle, I know.
So Venetia B-bout, is that, is that being pushed to be a roundabout also?
That was the initial design in our transportation improvement plan. That would require a significant amount of right-of-way acquisition, which would make it a very costly project.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Southern Beltway is at some point going to come right through that area south of there, right?
I mean, that's a little bit.
I've heard that that's not.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to call that speculation, but it's certainly not set in stone. And I think there have been a number of different renditions of the extension of the Southern Beltway, but we've not seen anything in quite some time that really even shows like a location.
I mean, I know it's not going to happen before, like my kids have kids, for sure.
I had, I had a resident call me on Venetia Road about six or seven months ago, pre-COVID. She just bought the house and then somebody told her about the Southern Beltway extension and the brown line literally went right through her property. And I was like, yeah, keep it on the radar, but don't be too concerned about it at this point. A lot of things are going to change.
We got a call about it like 10 years ago.
Right, right, yeah. People have come into the office and said, we were worried about this 20 years ago, now we're worried about it again. I was like, well, you might want to wait another 20 years to look at it.
But the B-bout, Venetia one, surprised me a little bit. I don't find that to be a, just personally, a, a traffic issue.
It's an identified improvement, I think.
I mean, I don't think I've ever waited there, ever.
We had the, the Venetia Hills project there at Miller's property and that's what triggered a lot of conversation about that. And it might be pushed for a very long time.
Right, 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 yes.
After, after Valleybrook B-bout, I, I believe it's going to be East McMurray Thompsonville B-bout.
And we took, they gave us, the folks who built, they gave us right-of-way for that project.
They gave us right-of-way for a turn lane for that, yeah, they, they worked very well with us to facilitate.
Confluence, that's the name, right?
Yeah, they're building a retaining wall.
And the revised East McMurray Road and access to the high school, that, they're moving a lot of dirt.
They're moving along very well with that project.
When is that supposed to?
I, I couldn't give you a date on that, but I, I, there was a meeting today at the high school about temporary, temporary occupancy. I don't necessarily think those two items would line up, but I think by the time they're ready to go into the school, the plan is to have the road done. But I don't know if that's truly going to happen or not.
I think that the, the school move is supposed to be December.
Right, 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 yeah. A lot of moving things here.
Yeah, this year. That's why there's a three or four week break for the school district.
For the kids.
For Christmas.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. All right.
All right.
Any other comments? Meeting adjourned.